All right, thanks Andrea. We're going to reconvene in the open session for the Emmy Vote of Education regular meeting here. And I would like everyone to please join me in the Budge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Well, first up is our spotlight on education. Jeff?
Come on up guys.
All right, so anybody who can get a takedown on one of these guys gets a $50 gift card to QuickTrip. So what'd you think about that?
I'll split it with you.
Whatever it takes. I just want to highlight these two, both individual state champs. For Wyatt here wrestled at 190 pounds, he's back-to-back state champion. Had a heck of a season. Kind of put us through a little bit of a scare with a knee injury at one point. But Wyatt lives and breathes wrestling, and so that injury was, kind of took us back again. And, but he was able to battle through and get the job done. I'd say he dominated at state until we got to the finals match, and it was a tough match. Very back-and-forth match, but he's got a mortar that doesn't stop and was able to come out on top there. Interesting, I'd like to highlight his brother too, who is also in the finals. And the Hopkins and the Inghams can both tell you what it's like to have two kids in the finals. Incredible stress, I think in the moment, but it'll be something both families can look back at at one point. Wyatt's actually going to the University of Wisconsin-Madison. He's going to wrestle for the Badgers. And so that'll be exciting for Wyatt. Again, 190-pound individual back-to-back state champ, let's give it up for Wyatt. And Coy, you guys have seen Coy before. Another multi-sport athlete, four-time individual state champ. I think there's 29 now in the history of individual state wrestling that have accomplished that. Coy is the heaviest wrestler to ever accomplish that. So he did it at 220 for three years and then senior year at 285, so congratulations to Coy. He's one of the most decorated wrestlers, I think, to ever come out of our state. And he'll be going to the rival school next year, to the Gophers. The cool thing is they'll both be close and for all of us that enjoy wrestling and, you know, following them, you know, it'll be a four-hour drive or a 45-minute drive to the cities to keep tabs on these. And obviously you can turn on your TV, and some of you probably did this weekend, to watch the NCAA finals there. So Coy is actually going out to Pittsburgh this weekend to a big event he's going to fly out there and wrestle at. But I told these guys that, you know, their story is just starting. And they've accomplished a lot at this point. I think what separates these two to a lot of distinguished athletes is, I'd say how they carry themselves on a daily basis in our building. And you would never know by walking down our hallways that these guys have accomplished what they have. Very humble, they hate being in the spotlight, they're probably dreading this right now. But just very classy individuals and they're easy to cheer for. And they've helped put us on the map, that's for sure. Also been a part of some team state championships too and conference championships and whatnot. So let's give it up for both of these guys one more time.
Do you guys know?
Do you guys want to speak?
Do you guys? Do you guys know your overall wins and losses total for your four years? You have any idea? A lot of wins to a few losses, I imagine.
Coy's 162.
Okay, that's good enough, I would think.
And I would like to say that we have gone to some of the biggest tournaments in the Midwest to get these guys some matches, some competitive matches. So although they do have some losses on their records, as you would expect, but they've lost to some big-time wrestlers that they'll run into at the Big Ten level here in their future.
Two of the best in the state right here.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
I had a question for Dad. Have you thought about holding him back? Five times.
Five-time winner.
My wife and I were talking about it, we're heartbroken, high school sports is dumb for us. We might interfere.
The Gophers might have a problem with that.
There's no way. Thank you. All right, wonderful. Next we have our consent agenda items. Who had those?
I had the consent agenda item, so I would make the motion we approve those as presented.
All right, in a second. Steve, all in favor, say aye.
President, I have a question. I'd like to know why my topic of discussion was rejected by your administrator.
Which one is that?
The one that was presented to you in the email.
And I asked for clarification in the email and I never got a clarification from you as to where you wanted it.
Can I have an opportunity to look at my email?
Sure. I said, please clarify what exactly you wanted.
I asked something. You put "to all." Joe, would you please clarify what you want to discuss so no one can play, or so I know where to place it on the agenda in the appropriate place? Thank you. That was on March 4th. On March 4th, I sent to you and Sean Duffler. Keith, I'm only requesting to you and Sean for the blocking and foreign possibilities. I would like to discuss the last paragraph of the email and the policy and procedure of staff following this policy. I believe the last paragraph, "All this could be for nothing," comment. I do not have an issue with her email outside of the last paragraph. It is administratively what the school would like staff to follow. Along with my opinion being different from the lawyer, I believe an administrator should learn the open records and we should not need to pay a lawyer every time there's an open records request. This has not been my first request for this training for the administrator on open records. I am attending a course tomorrow in Altoona on the subject. I have attended the course several times with someone as sharp as Sean, may not have to attend every few years like me. The underlying issue of politics is in school. Using a school work email to send out political statements. The statement in the email read by the lawyer from Eau Claire may not mean much, but if a name and another name are co-running an election and maybe other board members are assisting in their election campaign, it will sit differently by a local community who knows she is threatening loss of benefits, salary raises, or worse. If it gets past elections or someone new is different on the board. I am certain this occurred to me when I ran for board. Steve believed this occurred to him because of his election.
Actually, I responded and said it did not.
I'll read yours to you.
You don't need to.
It would lead to less drama and unprofessional conduct to speak about standards for everyone equally across all political party fields. I hope my concerns are addressed. Respectfully, Joe Buchanan.
And you didn't clarify where you wanted it, so I said, "Let's talk about it in closed." And we did, didn't we? Did we talk about it in closed?
You actually did not respond to me.
Did we talk about it in closed session? Because it involved a staff member.
I don't know if I can say that in an open session if we talked about it in closed.
I can, we did. I felt that was the appropriate place, viewing the email from one of our staff members. May I move on?
You can go on to the vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, one nay, there we go. Well, let's go to our administrative reports.
Your reports to the vouchers.
I think it's the complete consent agenda, so I think he's...
No, I'm not against your vouchers, I'm just against the consent agenda. As it was provided, since I did ask a school board member to have a topic placed on it, and it was, well, I think we have a difference of opinion if it was rejected or not. Okay.
Go ahead Josh.
High school administrative report. We are nearing completion on the remodel part in the Ag art tech ed area. And the remodel now has moved into the front locker rooms where the old locker rooms and the science wing. A lot of that work was begun over spring break. ACT was completed on March 12th. Foreign language kids and staff who went with just got back from trip to Spain, Italy, Monaco, France. March 13th through 22nd, 32 boys, four girls, and six staff members, so that was a good time. Upcoming events, we've got large group choir band contest tomorrow at Luck. It's during the day, it's a different time period. It's usually a night deal, but they're actually doing it during the day, but they are still allowing spectators. We've got the League of Women Voters coming in tomorrow at all three lunches to sub, uh, booth to help 18-year-old kids who'd like to learn how to register to vote do that. We've got Chess Nationals in Baltimore, Maryland on April 4th through 8th. We've got Southern students going there. Polk County has sponsored a presentation called the Lionheart Presentation. It's being shown at Amory Osceola Unit, and there's one other school in the area. Kind of a teen mental health check-in, talk about things that are going on in their lives. April 9th, we've got Soul and Ensemble Band Inquirer Siren. And then on April 10th, we've got our 9th and 10th grade state assessments, the pre-ACT. And then on that date, we take our juniors out to various college tours and tech schools within driving distance. We've got four different tours going out that day. That's the high school.
Great opportunity.
Yep.
Thomas?
All right, at the middle school, we just held our annual quiz bowl competition. It's a 6th grade competition, we had several teams competing. And on March 13th, they crowned the championship match. And it was pretty fun to see those students have a great time. We have our Ford Exam State Testing. We test at the middle school from April 2nd through the 12th. And for the Ford Test, that's grades 3 through 8. And then the 10th grade takes the social studies test, because that's not part of the ACT. We also have our Ford Online Tools Training. That's required training that we have to do each year to make sure that the kids are, understand the tools that it's asking them to use when they take the test. There's specific practice questions that they go through that the state provides and they have to learn. Okay, when they ask you to graph, here's how you click and drag, and here's how you use all the different tools that are a portion of that exam. We have teacher in-service coming up on April 15th. And at the middle school, we're working on school safety and our crisis plans. And then we'll be really taking a look at our process for building evacuation. We'll also be working in the afternoon on our goals and objectives. Taking a look at next year's and some of the long-range goals that we have for our building and having teachers kind of talk in the teams and the committees that they're assigned to.
What day is that Tom? Sorry.
That's April 15th.
April 15th in the morning. We'll hopefully be working with the police. We'll run some, I call them drills, tabletop exercises, X, Y, Z has happened. What would you do, how would you respond, or practice our communication. We have electric clocks where you can have messages, just scenarios in each building. It looks very different developmentally in each building. Elementary kids aren't going to stray too far from the teacher, and high school kids drive. So it looks very different. So just have some practice to be prepared. April 15th.
Thanks, I was just interested, since we talked about revisiting that crisis intervention manual last summer, and I see that that's obviously happening here, and I'd be curious what the follow-up is with that. Obviously not in a public session, but...
Right, and so as like Sean said, every building's, you know, doing their work in the morning. And we just took a team over to take a look at our evacuation site again, just to make sure that sometimes we assume that the place that we evacuate to, and you know, there's staff changes too, to make sure that they're understanding where we come and when we come in our process for parents coming in to check out kids if that ever had to happen. So we held that maybe a month ago.
Thanks.
At middle school, Josh talked about the Large Group Music Festival, so that's tomorrow during the day. The Warrior, we have a Warrior Week celebration on March 28th, and that's something that we do about every two months. Again, our Ford Exam starts the 2nd. 7th grade is taking their annual civics trip, something that they've been doing every year. They go into the courthouse and they look at, actually go into the courtroom, talk to the judge, see how that process works. They look at all the other different local and state departments. And then they take a tour, since they're over there, they go over to the Polk County Museum and get a tour there. And they split into groups and kind of rotate through. So that's been a good experience for 7th graders. We have a tornado drill scheduled for April 11th. And then our last day of Term 5 is April 12th. And then we'll start the last six weeks of the school year.
How do I get here?
All right, good evening. At the intermediate school, we had Golden Age Manor visits, so our 5th grade leadership students went to Golden Age Manor and played games and led some different activities with their residences there. We always look forward to and are thankful for any opportunity we have to collaborate with healthcare or with our community members, so students were very excited to have the opportunity to do that. Each grade level at the IS accomplished their Forward Exam goal for last year. So prior to taking the Forward Exam last year, they set their goal, and we were very excited to see that all grade levels actually met that goal, so met them as a grade level. So over the past couple of months, they have been celebrating their goal. So 4th grade enjoyed movie and a popcorn, so they took it when they were 3rd graders, so they enjoyed it as 4th graders. Our 5th graders enjoyed a morning of tubing at Trollhagen with their 4th grade teachers, so teachers from last year. And then our 5th graders, who are now 6th graders, actually came over and were thrilled to be here. No offense to the middle school, but they were very excited to come over. They got to play games with their 5th grade teachers, they used the climbing wall, which they hadn't used before, so it was really fun to see them back in the building. As we look forward to the next Forward Exam that begins for us on Monday, our grade levels have once again set grade level goals. So these aren't individual ones, these are grade levels. So if they accomplish them as a grade level, they get to all celebrate together with their teachers from last year. So it's a great opportunity to bring them back together with their old classmates as a group, and then also with their classroom teacher. Our entire intermediate school attended the Eau Claire Children's Theater production that was held at the high school earlier this month. So I want to thank Mr. Gould for allowing us to come over during the day. Along with the pajama day, that was our trimester reward as well to celebrate. Kindergarten through grade 5, social studies representatives met with me to discuss and plan our adoption of the Wisconsin DPI's Recommended Scope and Sequence of Social Studies units. This is a shift that we're going to seek to make after next year. They have a new scope and sequence recommended, and it also aligns very well with our adoption. So social studies will be up for next year. So it'll be a great time to align their recommendations along with our units that we're teaching. 3rd grade planting, our 3rd grade students walked through a very muddy field to the high school, and they worked with our agriculture, horticulture class to plant seeds and take cuttings of different plants. So they will watch over our plants for the next couple of months, help them grow, and then they will deliver them to us, so our students can deliver them to a very special person in the month of May. Intermediate School will complete our Forward Exam April 1st through, in the week of April 8th. Our IPO had a family fun bingo night on March 12th. The IPO hosted different games, great prizes, and even wonderful treats. So I once again want to thank the IPO for all the support. Not only do they help offset some funds for field trips and provide teachers with different resources, but it's also a great way to bring community members into our school. I think it's a great bridge that they have for us, and I know a lot of work goes into that. Finally, English Language Arts, a reading consultant from CISA 11 that we've worked with a lot over the last couple of years will be here for two full days this coming spring to work with our kindergarten through grade 5 reading representatives. She's going to continue to work with us on HMH Into Reading, our ELA curriculum, and the alignment of that with rubrics and our report cards at this time. Upcoming things for the IS. March 29th, no school. As I share, the Forward Exam is quickly approaching for us. There is an upcoming IPO meeting April 8th here at 6:30 in the Media Center. Our 4th grade concert is April 11th at 6:30 PM at the high school. And finally, April 15th, there will be no school, but it will be one of our in-service days. And we have a full morning planned on safety and security. And then our afternoon, we'll be looking at report cards and standards alignment.
Thank you.
Good evening. So we've had wonderful things going on at the Lean Elementary School as well. Annie Brayton and the staff have been at their fun planning again. They hosted February as Mercy Watson Month at Lean. And if you can see up on the board here, all of the thanks to our community members, all the way down. Amory Dare Queen, the barber shop, Amory Fire Department, Ellie's Ice Cream, Amory Public Library, Save-A-Lot, QuickTrip, McDonald's, Dick's Fresh Market, Amory Family Restaurant, Village Pizzeria, and the Cool Family and their piglets. They were all joined in our Mercy Watson Month, and they displayed books so that they could talk with the kids as they shopped out in the community. And the Amory Fire Department actually came in and had lunch with our kids, which was great. They really enjoyed that, and they also enjoyed buttered toast, which is Mercy Watson's favorite treat with our nutrition department at school. So all of those things were greatly enjoyed, and they wrapped it up with the Cool Family bringing in their very own piglets from the farm and learning about the pigs and getting to visit with them. So just a fantastic month for them to work within the community. So thank you very much for all those participants that helped us complete that activity.
That was such a cool thing to do.
It was an amazing thing. The kids love it.
She didn't get it. I'm glad you got it.
I just got it up there.
On March 1st, Lean Elementary welcomed the Women's Club, another community connection we had there for Read Across America. They met with the 2nd grade students as they have for years and years. Students received a book, and they had a wonderful connection with the Amory Women's Club with an activity after they read. So that was fantastic. We appreciate their connections all year round. March 4th, we as well were able to be welcomed by Mr. Gould at the high school to watch The Cat in the Hat. That was a great activity for our kiddos as well. The 2nd grade students performed a wonderful musical contest on March 5th, Jacques Frost Must Be Lost. I think Jacques Frost got found though. They displayed their talents at the art show as well, so their guests enjoyed some paintings, drawings, and clay donut creations, as well as wonderful music. So thank you to Renee Anderson and Shannon Henningsguard for organizing and putting that off of a great show. So the Lean Kids Heart Challenge wrapped up with a wonderful donations of $13,802. This was collected for, on behalf of the American Heart Associations, and the kids love this activity every year as well. So thank you, thank you for being a great part of that. Planning is continuing for our upcoming 4K orientation, which is on April 26th. If you have not yet registered, I would love for you to contact our office, and Gina will get you out a packet. But we're looking forward to welcoming our newest Lean students at our 4K orientation. And then our LPO has met on the 14th of March. They're planning our Lean Spring Carnival for April 5th. We just had a meeting here before I came over, and they're just looking for lots of volunteers. So if you are looking for something fun to do, the Farm and Flowers Spring Carnival would be a great choice. This is a very hard-working and creative group, so they've been a pleasure to work with all school year. April 4th, upcoming events, 1st grade art show and concerts starting at 6 o'clock. April 5th, summer school registration closes. And we're looking especially for some welcome to 4K and welcome to kindergarten registrations. So if there's anyone out there that would like to do that, please fill out the registration. April 3rd and 4th, our CISA ELA Work Day. April 5th is our LPO Spring Carnival. And the 1st through the 12th, Forward Exam for us, just for our 3rd grade Montessori students in our building. And then April 26th, 4K Orientation.
Wow.
Thank you.
All right, from Student Services, this is kind of the time of year that I like to provide some sort of output or feedback on data that's been happening, and you know, whether it's number of IDP meetings or paperwork. And so this year, I kind of looked at referrals and the special education referral workload. For those of you unaware, that's the process in which a child is identified or suspected to have a disability, and you know, observations are conducted with parent consent. We do testing, the team decides which assessments to carry out. There's a lot of collaboration, conversation between Gen Ed and special educators. And to this point, I asked our People's Service Secretary to kind of pull an estimate of how many pages we've generated. And now I understand that there's some words that are standard forms on these, but we've generated 976 pages for evaluation paperwork and special ed referrals. So those familiar with the copy room and see the reams of paper, that's about two reams of paper for those bookworms that are out there. War and Peace runs at about 1,400 pages. I don't know if we're going to get there as far as generating that number of pages, but we're going to be close. So I just want to recognize our wonderful special education staff, our general educators. It's a team process that all these evaluations occur. And you know, so I just want to recognize them for all the work that they're doing, which this is kind of in the background of things that anybody would walk around into a school and see, right? These are not visible activities that are happening oftentimes unless you're at the meeting looking at that paperwork. So thank you to all of our staff for their support in that. Community engagement, we've got April 2nd, Dr. Justin Patchen visiting us from the University of Wisconsin-Eau Claire. He's a criminal justice professor. He's visited us before, been a few years ago since he's come here, but he's going to present on teens and technology, cyberbullying, screen time, impact to social networking, and screen time on child development. He's the co-director of a cyberbullying research center. There's a lot of information on him online. So I encourage anyone to check that out, and we'll be pushing out some bright arrows, and you'll see posters and those sorts of things, because it's next week already. Sneak it up on us.
Yeah.
Finally, early childhood training. Over the break, I was glad to be able to go to the Best Practices in Early Childhood Assessment. We have some, we had a real veteran preschool and early childhood teacher retire a couple of years ago, and I am still recovering in terms of my knowledge and bolstering everything that I know as for early childhood experience and new learnings around assessment and how we can make solid eligibility decisions, especially considering the number of referrals that are coming through. So that was a great training and was, you know, was a good way to do some learning over the spring break time. Any questions?
Fantastic. Well, thanks for using your spring break for learning. How much of a spring break is it?
All right, thank you. Did you have anything Sean?
Just a re-up on the message that was sent yesterday in a variety of different forms in regards to snow days. We've now used one officially, we've got one yet that we have in the bank, if you will, before we have to start doing remote learning. We don't know what the weather event may be. I thought, I thought we were done with winter, but I guess that was a mistake on my part. It hit us, and we are, and one used and one left, and who knows what the future holds. But we built those in long ago when we adopted the calendar way back when. And we'll build them in again, we did for next year as well. So we live in Wisconsin, that's what we signed up for, I guess.
That's right. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we are going to have Ryan give us the transportation report.
Hello, everybody. Really close. We'll start with the next one, we always do the numbers first. And we kind of see that I've been doing the change. And for the buses, we've been, I know it's a lot more field trips and more extracurricular stuff. We've been traveling more for that. So that's the up of the mileage. Repairs, again, parts three, four times as much in the last year, keep increasing. But I have noticed availability has gotten better, we just, but the price hasn't come down. For our vans, you know it's a higher mileage in there. I did include, we have one car that I have been trying to push for more of the... that I have been trying to push for more of the lower capacity, you know, one or two people going and saving the fuel economy. So, I think that's part of the less miles we did, or the less fuel, but more miles, pushing the things that get better gas mileage. So, that's good for that. We did get our new bus in May of '23. And then, we did, we ordered one, and they did up the schedule, whether they're thinking it'd be October or November. And now, they're back to probably July and receiving it. And for the next bus we're going to order, they're saying that the timelines are improving. Not the prices, but the timelines are improving. And I know last time we talked, we talked about the routing software and some of the options that they have, using what we're already using. So, this TransFinder program, it syncs with our power schools. So, all the information that we have in-house here gets transferred over to that system, and it feeds off each other. And so, one of the things that we were talking about doing was the Route Finder Plus. Well, that's what we have now. We have the Route Finder Plus, and it's been able to better mapping. It shows where the students are. If they move, it's easier to place them on a route, because I can lay out different routes next to each other. Or let's say we have one bus that got full, then I can, I can put multiple routes on one layout on my computer, and I can see which, which one I can transfer students to to make it work. So, that's been a huge upgrade to the system. And this is the one I know, I think, Shaw, you were the one that mentioned it last year. This is Stop Finder, and it works with our system that we have. But all of our buses will get basically a box that goes into the bus, and they'll be able to tell where it's at real time. And so, if a parent will sign up for it, if they can say, hey, let me know when the bus at the stop before or within five miles, and it'd be a good way to do that. So, you know, like right now, if we have one bus that breaks down, we, only way we can message is everybody. We can't just message, hey, this bus is behind. So, I think that would be really helpful. It is expensive, because it includes per bus, the software, plus the, I guess it'd be like the internet access, because it has to upload to it, and then it adds another thing to my, my computer in my office that we would have. So, we'd be able to do some two-way messaging that way, too. Any questions on that one, before I go to the next one?
So, these are various options for accomplishing the goal of tracking kids at drop-off and pickup.
Yep.
Okay. And again, this is informational. This hasn't been decided on. If you all as a board want to pursue this, then it would need to become an action item, and then you could actually act if you wanted to.
Yep. And this was, he's been working on this for a while, because we have a lot of old buses, and they took some different software to make them link up. The newer buses are a little bit easier. But I think this, it would be a good option, but it is, it is kind of expensive, adding to something we're already paying almost $4,000 for.
So, this is on top of that?
And I know that Steve Leslie over at Osceola would really like, they're, they're ahead of me on this. They've had a Route Finder Plus for years, and he would love to go this way, but it's a cost thing. This is the next step, and this is actually having tablets on each bus. The benefit is, you know, if I have a sub-driver, you'll get that pop-up, and it'll say who's supposed to be getting out on that bus, and they can do attendance that way. Another option for it, to make it work the best, would be in, the kids would have an ID card that they could swipe when they get on the bus. And from his experience, the guys that were working with this, is they don't remember their cards.
Jacque and I are over here like, we don't.
But if you used it for your lunch account, your library, and it all worked for the same thing, maybe it would be something that they would start hanging on to more. But I think that'd be the trouble of it.
And like, I think we'd be mostly concerned about, like, elementary young kids, right? And then, but that would be a pretty big ask, I would think, of parents to make sure that they have those cards every day. And is, I mean, do you see that as a barrier to making this work?
I see, you know, a lot of the younger ones, they have it attached to their backpack. So, if there'd be a way that they could, because they do have the color-coded name tags already. So, maybe that we could replace it with this and have it on some sort of like retractable lanyard, so it stays on there. But it'd be, it'd be hard for the younger ones, for sure.
Okay.
And I think that one, the first year, the big thing is buying all the software and the mounts for each bus. But we could pull the tablet from our route bus to put it on a spare bus. We just need the mount. So, that'd be, we don't need one for every bus. We just need one for every route bus. And I think it was just more on the turn-by-turn directions. For sub-drivers, that'd be kind of nice, that if you get thrown on a route you've never done before, it would be pretty helpful. Any questions on the Wayfinder?
Has, have you talked to your transportation, like, I see you have them included here, and have you talked to your transportation staff about what their preferences are or how they envision it working with them being the ones driving the buses?
They're not too keen on this, because it'd be a lot of work. And, you know, if we didn't have the ID cards, we do a lot of the transfers where all the buses collect, and they gather at the elementary school. Then you literally wouldn't have to tap each person getting on and take attendance as they come on, and it'd be kind of tough. Whereas ID card, as they come on, they just, it would load who's on that bus. So, I think this one, for a lot of my drivers, they don't really like the technology. But some of the newer drivers are, this is kind of the way it's going. But again, it is, does add quite a bit to the.
I can see the pros and cons both ways, right? I mean, especially for older drivers, would it take longer, do you think, for kids to load on the bus now that you're doing that? And would we have to adjust, would that adjust bus times, do you think?
I don't think for the small stops or the larger ones, you know, on the routes I'm driving right now. I have one stop, I have like almost 20 kids get on, and it could be time-consuming for something like that. So, it could slow it down a little bit.
But I guess I'm talking about like school departure?
Oh, sure.
Because they're, they're scanning when they get on, school departure, too, right?
Correct. Yep. Because if, whatever you don't put on there, you don't tap who's on there, then they won't, aren't going to show up, so then it won't give the information for that, like Stop Finder either.
Right.
So, like, this, this, this can work without the Stop Finder and vice versa. But the Stop Finder just doesn't have any of the attendance information.
Gotcha.
And so, it's just easier. The driver doesn't need to do anything.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, these are the options that you're bringing forth, because these are really the only options that provide this type of service. So, it's up to you if you want to see this as an action item, or you just want to table it for another day, or not at all. That's up to you guys. At this point, it's merely informational.
Yep. And these prices are about six months old, so it could change a little bit. But he said this is going to be pretty close. If you guys are really serious, we can crunch some numbers and.
And how long would it take to, like, install those things if the board decided to go down that?
He said to our bus about three days. They'd have someone come out and do it for us in between routes.
You really haven't given a preference.
If I was going to, I do like the idea of the Stop Finder. And this year, it didn't really matter, but last year, when we had all the snow stuff, we had buses getting stuck and, you know, a million phone calls, and I have one person in the office. It's really hard to call ahead, like, hey, can you call this person, this person, this person? Then the next bus gets stuck, and now that bus is behind. So, this would really be helpful to that, because then the parents could see. They have to opt into this, and the only, the person would get the code would be the parent, you know, and they'd have to opt into it. But it would be a really good option to track where the bus is at or if it's behind. Or when it's really cold out and they're waiting inside, and save us some time waiting beside the road.
Right.
Yep.
So, just to clarify, you have what now?
We have just the Route Finder Plus.
So, you do have the Plus?
Correct. Yeah. And you have to have that for the, other things to work.
And are a lot of parents asking for this, or do you think the parents would be?
Last year, yes. Yeah. This year, it hasn't, we've been pretty good. They've been, a couple of buses, you get behind, but we haven't really had much for weather.
Right. How many students do you have riding ballpark?
Becky, do you remember that last year? We did the ridership. I can't remember either. We haven't done it yet this year. We do twice a year. We do, we hand out and check who's ridden once, at least. But when I did look it up, it was up a lot compared to the previous year. But we came from COVID. When I first started, we had COVID, and so then, every year, we'd seem to be getting more and more people getting back on the bus.
I'm just looking at it going, you know, you might, you might say $7,750 a year is a lot, but if you divide it by the number of kids riding, you know, what's the cost for the technology per kid?
Per, per people. Yeah, that's a, be a good thing to look into.
If six kids rode the bus once, they'd pay for this. Because it's around, as I recall, $1,300 worth of aid for a student to ride the bus, even if it's only one time during the year.
Correct. Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. That's all we need to do is tie six up and put them on the bus.
Maybe not quite like that.
And then, another thing, I guess, too, on a money note, is that we do have some buses that have some of the really old camera systems, and with a lot of the issues we've been having on it, I'd like to upgrade some of the cameras to, it's a bit. But that's something I could do within my budget, once I get to the end of the year. Like, maybe pick one or two buses to upgrade to the actual high-definition with cameras. You can see down in the seats, because all these seats are getting taller. And when you have the cameras at the front of the bus, you can't see. I was on my route, I think I had 30 kids on, and I looked out from my mirror, and I'm like, I can't see anybody. Because they're on the morning, they're all slouched down, looking at their phones.
Taking it out.
Yep.
I guess is that, is that an opportunity, I mean, I guess for, would it be more cost-effective? You wouldn't be able to see your, your child where they're at in the bus route. But if they were late, do we provide any form of cell phones for bus drivers? Or would that be more than the $7,500 to send out a group text or to at parents? You know, because you can get all of our cellphone numbers on, for parents who put the kids riding the buses. If you went in the ditch, or a bus broke down, or whatever, they could just say, hey, we're working on an issue here, and it may take a while for your child to get home.
Yeah, that's what we'll do, you know, we'll do it over the radio right now, and then, you know, they'll say, you know, if anybody calls, let them know, or if the driver knows, hey, I have these families on, could you call these families? I mean, that's kind of how we do it now.
But you said you're texting everybody if you're texting.
Yeah. And so, it's the same as we do like a Bright Arrow notification. There's not really a way to go per bus, you know. And I think, you know, having the one, the Stop Finder on there, that the driver doesn't really need to do anything. You know, I think that's really nice. But it is, it's expensive, because it's leasing the software for each bus every year. So, you don't have to pay for anything upfront, but you're, you're really, you're paying for it.
925 was the pupil count for student transportation last year.
So, is that, if you're leasing it, then it must include upgrades going forward to?
Correct. Yeah.
To technology, not just firmware?
Correct. Yep. And then, you know, we get a new bus every year, hopefully. And that bus will need the same thing, and then one will go off. Right. Then with our new buses, we do get one new camera system every year. So, I do have, every single route bus has cameras on it, not the greatest. But then we also have two spare buses that have the old systems on it. But yeah, I think if I could see something, I would try Stop Finder, the other with a tablet. I don't think we're there yet to do the card readers and attendance and. In that way. Now, I did keep, I didn't lose any drivers this year. I do have a couple of new faces that you guys haven't seen. Probably know them. I did get a new mechanic hired on, Scott, and then Grounds is Reggie. And it's been really nice to have those spots filled. I think it's going to save money in the long run. We, in the past, we've had to send stuff out, and it gets expensive when you can't do it in-house.
Yeah.
And then, for the van drivers, Larry Wolf is our new van driver this year, working both morning and afternoon. Any other questions?
Keep them rolling.
Yep.
Keep them rolling.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, is that, so is that an item that needs to be placed as an action item, or no?
What do you think, Ryan? For the Stop Finder?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it.
Before the end of the year?
Start of next year. I don't think I'm trying to do it this year.
Okay.
Again, I can put it on the agenda as action. You could do nothing still. You don't, you're not obligated to do anything.
But I can get some more hard numbers, just current numbers, too.
Well, when you do that, don't you?
I think, what is it, in May, we're going to do the bus bits. I'll be back with the board in May.
I'll look forward to it.
Ryan, could you also just ask a district for me, just luck if they have, the school district of luck?
If they, what they have?
If they have Stop Finder, or just what they have. I would appreciate that. I know it's an odd request, but there's a.
Osceola uses it for sure, but.
There's obviously a backstory to that, and I just, I just want that. I'd like to know what software they're using.
Is luck a school district-owned? Or they have a contractor?
I don't know.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, we'll move to our informational items.
Okay. Well, we did a building and grounds tour a couple of weeks ago. Keith, and Joe, and George, and I, elementary expansion. And also went into the inner workings of the high school with the latest and greatest on the remodel. The art and egg and so forth was just about ready to be turned over, but it wasn't quite there. So, that's an outdated message at that point, but Joe and Keith were there with us. And if George has got anything to share, this would be an opportunity to share your thoughts about what you saw and what we did.
Progressing well.
Yeah, I thought, obviously, the elementary school is looking great in sight over the time. And at the high school also, I mean, there was some significant things that had to be done or occurring now for safety and, right? And I'm talking in the science wing.
Yeah, the science wing is not yet, well, it's sort of started, but we haven't gotten full swing and knocking walls and whatever. I mean, that's, that's on the horizon.
They started now.
So, we've cleared out a couple of rooms, but we haven't created a physical space of where those new rooms and what the geography of them would look like, but we still got kids. We can't yet do that.
It's a straight shot from the far south end of Paul Ensign's old room to the north end of Ryan Uplands. It's all the walls that separated and divided. I got a good look at it today.
And then, don't lose sight of the commons area is a dramatic change as well, but that one is on the horizon, too. That's the last biggest endeavor, so to speak, on this deal.
But they were able to get rid of the asbestos, is what I'm talking about. Yeah, there was asbestos in the tiles.
We're still ahead of schedule, which is good, and we had a couple of abatement projects on Uplands in the science area. And then, within the last couple of weeks, we found some patches on the roof that we'll have to take care of. We won't need air, air clearance on those, which it'll be a cheaper deal. But we found a little mastic in the storage area behind some two-by-fours for the shelving, and that wrapped up today. So, fingers are crossed, everything else, for the most part, everything I bring to the lab is 99% asbestos-free. There's always those surprises.
And I would like to extend my kudos to the high school and elementary staff and kids once again. If not for their flexibility, we wouldn't be ahead of schedule, even with good weather. They've just been ultra-flexible. You basically green-lighted this way before it ever needed to be started. So, thanks to both of you and your staffs. It's been awesome.
Yeah. It's exciting for them to see the new changes.
The other half of this agenda item is the referendum master budget item, and I'll turn that over to John.
Yeah, just, just as a recap, I know this is only the second month that we've.
Yeah, just, just as a recap, I know this is only the second month that we've had this in here. So just a reminder that this is a prepared document from Kraus Anderson. It is a ever-evolving document. It's a spreadsheet, I should say. And so again, if you have any questions, please ask, and I'll help happily walk you through. But at the end of the day, the where we're at in the construction costs and the construction budget is that green line, unless my eyes are fooling me, that green line at the bottom there. And then after, once we start the athletics process and all that, that column will be added on there as well, whenever you guys want me to start adding that. So, but as of right now, since we're still in the planning process, those are, the, the numbers are just there for placeholders, so. But if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
With that, we'll move on to our March twenty-fifth, athletic facility.
Well, right here in this room on Wednesday, anyone that wants to come and see the, the design, proposed design for the athletic facilities, Kraus Anderson and LHB architect and construction contractor will be sharing that with us. That's right here in this room on Wednesday at six P M. Lot of interesting and fun things to see. It's been an exciting process from beginning up to this point. So that's just an informational update right here on Wednesday at six.
All right. And then your April fourth CISA eleven?
Yes, there's a CISA eleven workshop. It's centered on H R-related items. I've got verbal guesses from Shar and Steve to attend that event, and again, that's on April fourth from six to nine. They do a supper up there, and then they have a presentation. It's all of CISA, so there'll be quite a few people in the room, probably a good hundred, twenty-five, hundred and fifty people. That's what was there last year and the year before. So I will get people registered. That has to happen this week, so I'll get that done here tomorrow.
All right. Now, our visit from Jill Underly.
Well, this one isn't really mine to talk about. It's for those who did the tour and saw the presentation, I'll simply say I was beyond thrilled and incredibly impressed, because I am very certain I could not do what many of our kids are doing as high school students in our school district. It's, it's fantastic in all four of these areas. But I'll turn it over. I mean, there were many people in the room that were there, and I'll let you guys share your thoughts.
I thought it was fantastic to see every little piece that those kids are doing, and, and I felt bad for Shar, though she was having an allergic reaction to something. Sad, she cried the whole time. No, it was amazing. I was glad that she came up and to see, you know, those kids are doing so much stuff, not only in the house, but the, the plans for the, for the farm, and then to look at everything that happens in Emily Larson's area, and all the little things that they're doing that, we never did when we were in school. It's just, it's fantastic.
Yeah. Mentoring for the businesses.
You bet.
Kids were great, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I believe that they said they've been to how many?
Ten.
And this was the best one they had been?
This was the second to last one. They had one more visit that weekend, and their communications person said to me, this is the best one that, that we've, we've seen. When this first began, Josh and I met with their communications person, the same person that had part of that message to me, and they said adamantly, over and over, we don't want to hear from the adults, we want to hear from the kids, and Josh and I both said the same thing. We're in good shape if they want to hear from the kids, because we got all-stars. And they heard from the kids. They didn't hear from the adults. So that's awesome.
Very well spoken.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
I, my allergic reaction, of course, that's, you know, really where my heart is, is learning by doing, and the C T E programs, and I've, I've made that no secret, and it was fantastic to hear the kids, and it didn't matter really which area that we went to. And, and I've seen those relationships grow with those teachers, with kids personally, but it really made me take pause when we heard a couple of young ladies in our family consumer ed area who said, Mrs. Larson just makes this feel like home for us, and she gives us a place that we know that we can come to, and that we can fit in, and that we are valued here. Which is, should be the goal for all of us, as leaders, as educators, as administration, is to make sure that kids are seen and heard and feel that they have a place to fit in and buy in. So that spoke volumes to me, and I think every kid that's in these programs feels that way, and maybe not even in these programs, but it goes off to art and band and all the rest of the things that we have that really gives kids a place to be. The other thing that really stood out to me was when Dr. Jill Underly said, and I'll echo what, what you've all said, is that she said, this is really the, the best one that I've been a part of, was because that every area talked about how, what they're doing has projects for the greater community, and how they're linked to this community, and how the community will benefit from all of the projects that are happening, and that is exactly what we want our kids to learn in those areas, is that this is a, you're part of this community, and the community is going to benefit, whether it's this community or whatever community you end up being in after graduation. It was a phenomenal experience, and probably out of the six years that I've been sitting in this chair, the most privileged experience that I've had a part of, being a part of.
Yeah, yeah. It goes to show our staff that when they come up with an idea, they make it happen, and they provide opportunities that these kids just grab a hold of and take off.
It's just money well spent.
Yeah.
It is money well spent.
Yeah, yeah. It's, even the boys, they're little, they're building the house, but they were, they're proud of it.
Oh, that was like
They were chattier than I thought they would be.
It was my, it was my favorite part is when he, the, the one, I can't remember the young man's name, but he was standing there, and he said, he was, every, every boy there that was part of the, the House Building Academy said what they, like, they took the lead on and what they worked on, and the one, the one little young guy said, we painted, and that was cool, because we got to watch the paint dry. It was fantastic, just fantastic. And, and one of, one of the young men I know, and he, he asked me, he goes, did, did you like that? And I'm like, ah, that was great. And he goes, yeah, but, yeah, but he was serious.
Yes, all areas are wonderful. It's just, you're, you're inspired by the young people, really are.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want us to lose sight of what this was. So this was the high school here in the school district of Amory being recognized amongst four hundred-plus high schools for their accomplishments in the area of C T E, which if you're unfamiliar, is ag, family, consumer ed, tech ed, and, and business. So we are amongst the best, and the best of the best, and that is a big compliment to our staff, our high school administration, and also, most importantly, to our kids.
Yeah, yes. Yeah. Thank you to the students for doing this.
It was a fabulous day. Josh, did you have something to add to that? You were there, and obviously, these are your, your kids.
You guys have already kind of mentioned that a lot of these kids, they, they need a hook, you know, to get them to feel connected to the school. You know, when I look at all these pictures on here, it doesn't matter which one it is, those kids aren't in my office because of behavior referrals. They've got such positive things going on for them at school that it's really important. When kids feel ownership and belonging, pride, changes their behaviors at school positively.
Yeah, I, I mean, and not only, you know, changes their behaviors at school, but increases their attendance, and literally is a precursor to school safety, because they feel a sense of belonging, so, you know, that really does proactively increase our security as well. So when, when kids feel part of something, I think it's, it's very helpful.
Yeah, wonderful.
It was great.
I asked for extra credit points on the state report, Karen.
Yeah, you did.
We had a nice private conversation as we left that day. I pretty much told her what I thought of the report, Karen.
So did I.
Yeah. All right. Well, with that, we will move to our action items, and Jessica, we have a science curriculum.
Wonderful. Well, this is revisiting from last month's community engagement portion. Just a gentle reminder, this year, we took the year six-eight science to vet resources, so we have a seven-year curriculum adoption cycle. So we, we take a year to vet the resource, teachers gather the information, pilot the program if necessary. Next steps were then compiling a purchase list, a wish list. I then bring that to the administrative team, and then I bring it to the curriculum oversight committee. So this was brought to the curriculum oversight committee earlier this year. You all saw it last month at the community engagement piece. So we don't have to walk through every slide. I know you have the document in front of you. I will highlight, one slide has been changed, but Becky, if you will go to slide thirteen, I'm just going to summarize, nothing on the elementary, one back, nothing on the K five elementary intermediate school curriculum purchase has changed. So this is the two purchasing categories. So the first is technology and supplies, and then digital resources. The digital resources that I walked you through last month, those are shared K five. We have very similar scope and sequence units, themes. So both of those digital resources that are on there actually lend themselves very well to both buildings. The changes that I described to you are on slide seventeen. Six-eight needed a little bit more time to revisit some of the items that they were requesting. Mr. Benson and I met with them, walked through what these were, so I'm here tonight to share them with you. You can see from Fin Scientific as well as Amazon, this is what they were requesting. It was shared with me that some of them are student activity kits that, that are utilized within different classrooms. The number next to the total is, is the quantity. The Amazon are jigsaw puzzles. Those are just nice components, add-ons or extensions of units that are being taught, as well as an additional, eight, eight additional hot plates and stirs, and then some scoop sets, and then some heavy duty, heavy-duty beakers were requested. So this is where the six-eight science budget comes in. And then, Becky, slide twenty-two will be the summary of our science, K eight science purchases for this year, coming in at one thirty-five, nine fifteen, and two cents. So it's a board action item. If you guys have any questions, Mr. Benson and I could hopefully answer them for you, as well as we do have a, a science teacher here as well, if you have any questions.
And the budget number, Jessica, was?
Hundred and forty thousand.
And there was, we talked, if I remember right, that there was a good portion of this is not just a one-year thing.
Correct, yeah. We have E I E kits, and so with it being, those are just science kits. With it being a seven-year cycle, a big task of K five teachers were to find out what consumables do they need for the next seven years. So there was a lot of Amazon purchases on there when they paste them out with student numbers, and how often they use those kits. That's what most of those purchases were. Our budget is one, one hundred and forty thousand. Where we like to have some grace in there is that Amazon prices change and differ. And so if things have gone up or down, we'll utilize it to, to, to stay right within that one forty, but this is a nice buffer for us.
Absolutely.
President, I'd like to make a motion, since I'm on the curriculum committee, and this is the Ambrosio, I've already went over this with me, I'd like to make a motion to accept the K eight through science curriculum order purchase.
Okay.
As it's written.
And Steve seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? All right. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Now, we'll start college now. A little late, Josh.
Yeah, right. In a growing trend, we, we have a number of students that are taking advantage of this opportunity next year for the fall. We have twelve students who have worked with our school counselors to enroll in courses next year, either at Northwood Tech, or River Falls, a number of schools. Great opportunity, and as Dale will remind you, this is that thing that's state law that we have to remember.
Not a lot of choice.
Not a lot of choice.
Not a lot of choice, yeah.
So twelve students, and I, I have, we've got a, a number of kids from all over the classes next year, like different kids taking advantage of this opportunity. So it's good to see. It's, it's similar to the C T E program, kids finding their niche and finding some neat opportunities, so.
And we have twelve, you said?
Twelve students next fall.
Motion for start college now?
I'm in the motion.
Steve, and a second?
Second.
Shar, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? There we go. Next, we have safety and security. You would ask for that to be on, Joe?
I did. Was I supposed to come with something prepared?
Or not, you can table it till next month.
Oh, I think we can talk about it. I wanted to have a, I don't know why it's, I guess I'm not sure what we're actioning on, but
I, I put it to action in case something needed to be acted on.
Right.
That's, if nothing happens, then nothing happens.
Nothing happens.
Okay.
But if it's informational, then you can't take action.
Right.
Okay, so last month, we, I brought this up, and especially in regards to what is being brought to at least, you know, we, we got this phenomenal sports complex being, I mean, just an absolute opportunity for this district. But yet, at the same time, I'm thinking more about school safety, and how, again, I think all of us are on the same page in regards to, we want every child to be as safe as possible and attend schools, you know, in a healthy environment. But what I'm, what I am noticing, I mean, even Shar and I brought up, part of school safety is something like a program that they feel a part of. You know, I was thinking about, I was thinking about, you know, weather, like today. You'll never get me to be upset with you for stopping, you know, for, for stopping school. It's the right decision. The last thing we need is an accident where students are killed. Yes. In middle school, they're doing anti, you know, bullying. I mean, curriculum's talking about behavior. We just talked about building and evacuation plans. Building, construction, and the design of the building itself. You know, our crisis plans. And I know last week, again, so Shar, you mentioned that I missed a, a meeting we had, like, you said a year ago, but I think it was like two years ago. And I really wanted to hit on what have, there's been some horrible, horrible tragedies to our children and teachers and schools in the nation, and I wanted to talk about the opportunity to talk about a school liaison. And again, we all have differences of opinion on where we stand in regards to school safety. My idea of school safety is a police officer. Someone who can earn the trust of kids, someone who can earn the trust of teachers, and who can be a mentor, a role model, and ultimately protect the children at all costs. So we have this really broad idea of school safety. And I wanted it just to be brought up and discussed, because again, like, I, I didn't mean to ruin everyone's parade. I voted yes for the sports. But I really think we should look at putting in a phenomenal person in our schools to protect her, to protect our children. And I guess, but that's just my side, right? I'm only one of five. So I wanted your guys' opinions. I think I kind of went over quite a few of them, because I know, Shar, you said I was on the fence. And I wasn't listening at that point, and I missed it. I want you to know, I am not on the fence about our children and safety.
I don't, I don't remember using those words, that you were on, on the fence. I said, I think you were on the fence about having a school resource officer in the building that you felt would build those relationships and be that kind of mentor that you're talking about now, that you didn't know that the Amory Police Office, the Amory Police Force had somebody like that.
Yeah, and I, I don't know their entire, you know, obviously, in law enforcement, it's, it's like education. We're all struggling with the recruitment process. And I know, again, and I'm not part of the police department anymore, so I don't know the internals. And this would be a phenomenal discussion, obviously, for the police chief and his team. But, no, I, I I would, again, I, do we want the most perfect person we can possibly get? But no, I, I, I would, again, I, do we want the most perfect person we can possibly get to school? Absolutely. But there's no such thing. We're in a, we're in an imperfect world, we're imperfect people, we all fall short. So I'm willing to take whatever I can get, bless you. And, uh, and I am, I'm willing to take whoever I can get right now. And I'm, I'm, obviously I'm fearful, um, with societal concerns and, and shootings throughout the nation. And I don't want us to be one of the, the, the districts to do it. Cause again, if it happens, you guarantee, I guarantee you the next month, we're putting this on the board to, you know, to the agenda to get a, to get a police officer in our schools to protect everybody. I just don't know if that, I don't, I don't want that to occur. But again, at the same time, my idea of a cop may not be your idea of what school safety is. So, um, and obviously I've just told you what my version of school safety is. I would like to have other individuals input from this board.
I'd like to ask some questions just because, I mean, I recognize what a resource officer is, but I don't know the internal workings of, of how it functions. So, um, questions I have are, who pays for them? Is it the district? Is it the police force? Is it a, is it a shared cost? Where do you stage them? Are they better off in elementary school or are they better off in high school? Or is there some, something in between? And then, uh, I'm guessing their statistics on, on reaction time. Obviously if they're on campus, that's something, but if you have to go to a different building, is there a, is there a huge difference in reaction time? And maybe you can answer those questions.
No, I, I agree that I think the Amory School District in itself and, and the fact that there's four different, not, I mean, not counting bus garage, but, um, there's different buildings that if you have one officer, it's obviously a logistical nightmare if something were to occur at one place and the next. You know, I think the person behind the camera right now probably can answer more of these questions than I could. But I do know, just because the role I'm in, that there was a grant. I do know because the role I was previously in, that that grant is not available to the Amory School District or the City of Amory because we didn't follow through with keeping an officer. Um, that was the community oriented policing grant, the cops grant, and it was already utilized. I do know, again, being in, in law enforcement, that usually it's a seventy-five percent school district, twenty-five percent city, um, or sheriff's department, county funded. But obviously it's all taxpayer. So, um, reactionary, you know, the, the thing is too, is again, I, obviously I, when I brought this up, you know, I, I felt a little bad because I had an, you know, I said there's a knee-jerk reaction for, for, uh, to have a meeting. But the, the truth is, is, you know, I, I watched the chief from Parkland, Florida, give a presentation on the shooting that occurred down there and it was absolutely terrifying. Um, and I just never, I never wanted to happen here. You know, there's, there are things, other potential threats and shootings. Uh, the New Zealand event where, uh, they put the stuff on social media and they do it live. Multiple bad actors in several different locations. So you have one cop and it happens in two different places. Whereas Ryan, targeting buses. Increased attacks at sports fields, extracurricular activities. And then, uh, something that we also have here is threats against our daycare. And I, and, and you know, again too though, I want you to be very clear, this is obviously emotional to me. I just got chills when I said daycare. That someone would actually do this type of behavior. But it's gonna take a good guy with a gun to protect us.
Well, who's, who's committing those crimes typically?
I don't even wanna go there. People with severe mental health issues who could hurt our most...
Well, you have my, the reason for my question, is it, is it usually somebody that's within the district? So is it a student typically or is it somebody outside the district, a parent or a, some other person?
So an inside versus an outside?
Yeah, yeah. And the reason that I ask that, just to play devil's advocate, right? Um, not that I, I, I don't want to disagree with you because I do agree with you, but is, if you talk about those dollars spent on that piece, is there, could those dollars be spent on mental health? Does that, just statistically, does that make any difference? Or, um, I'm all for good guys with a gun, but is that the right answer all the time? Or the, or the majority of the time statistically?
Would you say too, it would statistically change between buildings? Obviously for the elementary school, it would be our person from outside the building, right?
Usually.
Correct.
Yep.
Um, but then we'll just say for middle school and high school, there's a very high possibility of that person being a student.
Presentations given by, by Troy Miller from LHB. He is, uh, what he does on the side is school safety presentations that relate to school design because clearly school designs and safety are related. And he makes a very clear discrimination between elementary and high school, which is probably an obvious one. Uh, the high school, the threats in the building, it's the kids and the elementary is an external threat. So that's the, on its face, the simplest demarcation between the age levels of kids. What districts are doing in the cities? Uh, most districts are, um, doing away with school resource officers and pouring that money into mental health efforts because they feel that the perpetrators of such crimes, it's very much connected to mental health. I'm not here to advocate whether that position is correct or incorrect, but that is what the trend is, uh, in, uh, the cities at least. And that came from Katie Johnson who attended a presentation where that information was shared with her and she shared that with me.
You're correct, but I, I spoke with a close friend of mine who works for the city of Madison. They're doing that in big cities. Obviously I think that that's extremely unfortunate. And I think that, again, urban environments like that have a very big difference of opinion of not only police officers, uh, than we do in this, in Amory. And, um, I sure hope we can recognize that.
Yep, and I, and I think it'd probably be a good spot to share and you and Keith and I and George have been on these tours. We've talked elementary and we've been in the elementary on multiple occasions. Um, there are some added measures there. I know they're not foolproof and certain a hundred percent succeed. Uh, but having more barriers to get where you need to go has been helpful, uh, the elementary. And Paul, I could speak to this as well, there are more doors to go through than there ever will be. In some spots, you'll need to go through two and three and four doors to get where you wanna go. Doors that don't exist presently. So that's a safety upgrade at the elementary school because again, the threat is an external threat. If they gotta go through a bunch of barriers, that's helpful. That slows them down, which helps response time from law enforcement and so forth. So that's been a good addition. High school looks different. Our high school is built on an open concept and it isn't, uh, it isn't beneficial to, uh, safety and security picture, uh, by your own admission. It's an, it's an open concept. Middle school's the same. Um, if you wanted to have a safe and secure entrance, look at New Richmond High School. You literally gotta go in a door and then you can either go athletics or you can do auditorium and you gotta go through another door to get there. That's a school, that's what, what's New Richmond, ten high school, ten years old? The high school is, I'm not a mathematician, but it's not ten, it's like fifty. So we're not up to snuff in that regard. But we are doing some work at the elementary, so that's good.
Do you feel, I, I think we maybe asked this before, but, uh, we're taking out the locker banks in the high school. Um, do you feel that that will help at least improve your sight of vision now when people cut, are buzzed into that door? Does that give a, a better, clearer picture of where people are going and being able to watch for them? Or do you not see that making a difference?
You know, I think, um, adding the signage and stuff, just, just making it a more navigable place is, is going to help out. Um, I think the secretaries in all of our buildings have done a really nice job with the buzzing systems. I overhear, you know, when people buzz in at our door, you know, it's, they're getting interrogated pretty darn good. You know, unless it's the tenth time someone's came in and they've developed a relationship with them. But, you know, always ask them the, the questions. But, you know, at the end of the day, we all know that, you know, those, that might not matter.
I, sorry, I, I just, I was gonna say, um, when, when we had the police liaison officer, I think the strength of it was, um, you know, we, it's, it's no secrets, we do have officers that have to come into the school at times when there's concerns. I don't, I, we have tried really hard to try and get the officers to come in at other times. Shoot hoops and do, and other interactions with kids on the positive. And they did a really nice job. I, one of the strengths when we did have a police liaison officer was, um, the kids were interacting with them in, in multiple ways.
Positive.
Positive ways.
Proactive.
Uh, they were helping, coming in and they were leading some class sessions with kids and, um, um, behavior things and how to handle, you know, and so, um, if you have the right person, um, that's a, was a huge help because then, you know, they're interacting with an officer in a lot of different ways, which, um, was great. And, um, building those connections. And we also have the officer available for, uh, they had hours were set, kind of flexible. So when we had Friday night football games or a big event outside, they were able to come in later in the day and then stay for that event, which helped having extra. And, and, um, especially someone that the kids then got to know and felt comfortable going and talking. So that, to me, I think was one of the big strengths of the, of the program. Um, as far as safety concerns, um, the other things that were, like, when, we made quite a bit on our crisis plan. Um, one of the things we're talking about right now is what to look, you know, again, because a lot of times when you see really, really bad crisis situations, the kids tip their hands and they put out a message or they say something to somebody. And so we really work with our kids on how to report things, um, and not to, not to, you know, not to, you know, to make sure that they are communicating any types of things that they hear, see. And, and our staff, we talk a lot about that with kids. And having an officer that, um, that they feel safe too and, and more comfortable with, I think that would be a strength. So, um, if you can find the right person, I would, I'd, I'd feel supportive of that.
In regards to SRO, uh, and I think you know this better than anyone in the room, Joe. It isn't a matter of whether we have the right person, do we have anybody? Cause there is a, a great shortage of officers in those candidate pools. And I think the city and according to the Free Press, in an article, they were very short-staffed, the way it appears.
And that is a shared position with the City of Amory, right?
Yeah. Well, it, it can be anything, but that's what it has been.
Okay.
Joe, what typically happens, uh, during like the summer? Does officer just go into a full-time patrol position or something?
Correct, and it really depends where, whether they go into patrol or investigations or however they can assist over the summer. But yes, they...
So on the, on the, you, someone had mentioned seventy-five, twenty-five on the funding ratio. Does it, does, is that like year-round seventy-five, twenty-five or during the school year seventy-five, twenty-five? And then the summer is devolving?
It's for a year annual.
Got it.
So, um, yeah, and again, it's, it, it's extremely, um, I mean, it's another person, let's be honest. It, it's a hundred thousand dollars a year position, in my opinion. With benefits and salary benefits and altogether, it's a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Are there other local schools that have one today?
Yes, there are.
I mean, like, do you know anybody out top of, top of your head?
Uh, Somerset, Spalding.
I don't know anymore. I, I used to know this.
Unity does.
But I don't know.
Unity does. Unity has the Polk County Sheriff's Department, uh, filling their position.
I can ask. I can do a, I can do a, the CISA survey, if you will, and find out what the thirty-nine schools are doing.
Yeah, but obviously...
I, I think it's probably a mixed bag in regards to what people are doing.
Barron actually shares one with Cameron.
Okay.
That's a Barron County deputy.
And those people are kinda onsite at school eight hours a day?
Yeah, Rice.
Roughly.
Yeah, Rice Lake has two.
Yeah, okay.
And yeah, it's, and you know, I, you know, I, again, I brought up like the worst of the worst, why I really want one. But you're right, it's, it's some of the small things, it's the proactive ventures. And I, and again, I truly believe, you know, we as law enforcement, um, have to get to, we have to be able to show these kids that we're trustworthy if we wanna really change the outlook on law enforcement. And, um, so again, it's shop with a cop. It's, I mean, it's so many different things that could be, I mean, I've been in our schools reading books.
So can I ask a question? Is, is there more value in that than in having somebody on the payroll? Like, could we do a bigger push, a bigger effort working with, with Amory and the, and the county to get people here for those type of interactions?
I, again, I know that there's officers who would absolutely love to do that. Um, you know, it, again, it was one of my mentalities to, to get to the schools when I was in Amory. That was, again, that was what I really, my goal and focus was on, was community oriented policing. You know, I, I'd even, you know, when I was here, I thought, I mean, I did reports in the cafeteria. I mean, I just wanted to be around in case something horrible were to happen. Or again, if people just saw me writing a report, let's be honest, that's a lot of the time what I do. It's, I, I guess, you know, I had often thought of, why spend all the money and build a police department? We could attach one to a school. You know? Hate to see an idiot come in the school then. You know, we're having lunch, we're here, whatever, we're doing reports.
Perhaps a good place to start is to have CISA do a two-question survey and add questions of however you see fit. The first, do you or do you not have an SRO? And second, how do you fund it? And that will give you, it won't give you forty school districts because not everyone responds to every survey, but I bet we get about thirty data points and then we can see what others are doing. Maybe there's information there that we can glean and we could, uh, use here in Amory.
I guess I would, I would, if you ask those, I would ask a third is if you don't have one, are, are you doing anything else?
Okay. That might be a big question because if you asked us that question, holy moly.
But I, I'm talking like, like the interactions with, with the county or the, you know, are they doing something else with mental health or are they, are they resh, are they shifting efforts is I guess the...
Yeah, I would, I would try and ask that in a way where it wouldn't be a daunting answer. Because if I ask these people, give me all the ways we're working on mental health, uh, they might be here a while. There's lots going on.
And I'm also seeing this just at my level too. I mean, Cumberland's another one that's had a school resource officer. Turtle Lake, I mean, I mean, a community much smaller than ours, is, is gonna be starting a school resource officer. I, again, I, I think in areas like ours, uh, where we support law enforcement, they have school resource officers.
I will see what I can find out and I will bring that information to all of you and you can have further discussion if that's amenable to all you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sounds good to me.
Alright. We shall now move on to donations.
We have, uh, one donation, uh, from the Freedom Fishing Foundation. Thank you for the one thousand dollar donation to the Amory High School ice fishing team. I'm not sure if we got out much to do that and I don't think they should be out now.
They, they've actually finished really well this year.
Yeah?
Uh, not on the ice or just regular?
No, on the ice.
Okay. Some brave souls.
They stayed dry.
Alright, and a motion to accept the donation?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
On second.
Joe and Steve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we know where the Freedom Fishing Foundation is from, by chance?
Steve, I don't.
I can't answer that one, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
I do not know.
Alright, and now personnel action?
Personnel action, new employee and extracurricular contracts for Emily Amundsen, a high school math teacher. Mary Beth Torrico, special ed para. Amy Danielson, high school assistant track coach. Kimberly Heltney, library media para. Lillian Pearson, art teacher. Kalen Roberts, club house assistant teacher. Uh, Eric, oh boy. Brad, can you help me?
Shinkenberg.
Shinkenberg, okay. Shinkenberg, high school special ed teacher. Justin Schu, high school track assistant coach. Michelle Sigsworth, seventh grade math teacher, long-term substitute. Reassignment, Carrie Cullser from library media para to office para here in the intermediate school. Reassignment, Carrie Cullser, from library media para to office para here in the intermediate school. Resignations, kindergarten teacher, Deb Anderson, effective end of school year. Cheryl Freer, special education para. Tim Henningsgard, high school boys hockey head coach. I believe that's twenty-five years plus. So that's a long time there. Natalie Jackson, speech and language pathologist, end of year. Olivia Peters, fourth grade teacher, end of year. Uh, Haley, I always miss this last name up, Prul. Prul, I wouldn't have gotten it. Special ed para and a retirement for high school English teacher, Mike Benzley. And I have a little ditty from Mike that I can share with you. And I'm not sure, Josh, if you wanted to say anything, you've worked with Mike longer than I've worked with Mike.
I'll let you read them.
Okay, I will queue it up. I just gotta get there here. He sent this to me. Uh, we ask the same questions each time, and here are the answers, uh, from Mike. Um, first, number of years in education. He's been in education since nineteen ninety-eight. For five years, he worked at the AmeriCorps member substitute, taught, taught seventh grade, he taught science, I did not know that. And led student nature field trips throughout the Western U.P. from Michigan Tech. Uh, a number of years in Amory. He's been here since two thousand and three, which puts us at twenty-one years. Uh, favorite memory or memories from Amory? I will miss the labs and conversations with my coworkers. I'll miss the look on the faces of students who finally get it. I'll miss the anxious anticipation of a new school year. I'll miss connecting with students about the sports they play, books they read, and lives they live outside of school. I'll miss students seeking out to tell me they got accepted for, into their first choice of colleges. I'll miss how often students think they want to attend college after high school. I'll miss student successes over the chessboard. I'll miss the connections I've made with students, their families, and my colleagues. What am I looking forward to? I'm looking forward to the adventures that still lie ahead. So Mike Benzley.
I, I would just say, we talked about those safe places, and Michael has created some really impressive safe places. Um, you know, it's no joke, his chess club that he's had for twenty years. And you go in there every Tuesday and Thursday after school from three-thirty to, he kicks them out at five o'clock because they just want to stay in there and play chess. And he's driven them all over the state of Wisconsin, Minnesota. They've gone all over. And it certainly instilled confidence in the number of kids and it's been a hope to get them to come to school, something that shouldn't be overlooked.
Dan, do you have a chess club to continue?
Well, you gotta have someone willing to take it over, Mr. Austin.
How about fifty-fifty? Will that continue?
I don't think the person doing the actual organizing of the event is the reason. Unless you got it in or something.
No, no, I don't, no. But I want to thank Michael. He's great.
Yep, yep, he's made, made a difference. That's the key to them all. As is the rest of them on here.
I do love chess, though.
You could be the advisor.
I don't know about that.
All right, and we need a motion to accept personnel action.
I'll make a motion to accept the personnel.
Dale, on a second?
Second.
President, can I ask a question?
Sure.
And maybe I need to wait for closed session, I'm not certain. But are you able to tell, tell me for any of the educators, or they leaving for anywhere else, or what?
Um, if you go to, uh, resignations, I can speak to you about that in general terms.
Yeah, just general, like?
Yes. Uh, other locations, but not because of displeasure with Amory School District. Relocation because his husband been deployed and their family lives five hours from here, that's one. Um, I don't know in two of the other instances. I think there's one that's going to do the same work in New Richmond as a para. Um, I don't think there's a destination. I know there's not a destination as another hockey coach for Tim Henningsgard. I can guarantee you that. He's Amory through and through. Uh, in one, uh, just leaving the profession because their work-life is over and they have, uh, other endeavors. But there isn't anyone that's endeavored to say to me, I gotta get out of Amory. That's not in any way what, any resignation they've said to me, or probably to the people across the room from me. But if you want to ask for more details in closed session, I can tell you exactly where someone.
No, I don't. I just want to make sure no one's leaving us, um.
No, in fact, the one that's moving to the other side of the state is about as despondent as anyone can be. I mean, she don't want to go. She wants to be here, but life has happened.
Thank you.
Thank, you're welcome.
All right. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, no? There we go. Uh, community comments.
Here, read your thing.
Pardon? Yep. I'm gonna see if there is any, then I'll read it. All right. We have one. Hang on a second here. I'm gonna get my stuff together, because I got too many. All right. All right. These are the guidelines for addressing the Board of Education. Welcome to this meeting in the School District of Amory Board of Education. We are pleased that you're interested in the work of the school board. You may address the board only during current community comments time on the board meeting agenda. Any resident, district employee, or guest invited by the board may make comments about any decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. The following guidelines have been established for addressing the Amory Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign-up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign-up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Community comments must pertain to a board decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Common time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding board member. Political speeches which are not materially related to board decisions, policies adopted by the board, or are not about a board meeting agenda item are strictly forbidden. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the school district are also strictly forbidden. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, state your name and your municipality, where you live for the record. The board normally receives a citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need or for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will get back to you with a response. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of a future board meeting. Please leave your name and contact information if you wish to be contacted by a member of the board or district administrator regarding your community comment. All right, and we have Stephanie Jansen, uh, policy five fifty.
All right. Stephanie Jansen, Garfield Township. On February twenty-eighth, I received an email regarding a concerning staff member that had been held, a concerning staff meeting, sorry, that had been held with Administrator Sean Dierfler earlier that day. Among other things, the email stated one last thing. School board elections are coming up in April. Please think about which candidates would best have your interests in mind, because if this drags out past the election, all of this discussion could be for nothing. Those raises you are looking for or forward to could be gone. The bereavement leave could go away. Our allowed days off could be taken away. You get the point. I'm here tonight to inform you that this is a threatening and coercive language, violates Amory School District Policy five twenty, political activities. Two separate staff members who had two different advisors representing different committees or groups in attendance to the advisory committee brought forth concern, concerns of staff exploiting their privileges or position for political purposes for themselves or specific candidates throughout, through the school facilities. On March first, I made a public records request for the original email from the advisory committee, as well as all corresponding emails. On March fourth, Sean Dierfler emailed, emailed me my requested documents. The email sent by Sean Dierfler was incomplete and had a, missing an entire paragraph. He also did not provide the corresponding emails required or requested. On March fourth, I asked Sean if there were any email correspondences. On March fifth, he provided the email correspondences. March sixth, I asked Sean again if he had provided the advisory committee email in its entirety. I still have not had a response. At this time, I also requested email communication between any school district staff and board members regarding the advisory committee email. On March seventh, Sean Dierfler sent an email clarifying, clarifying what I was requesting. I am requesting all communications you have sent and received with the board as a whole, individual board members, and/or staff members regarding my open records request. On March fourteen, seven days later, I followed up with Sean as I had yet to receive the request. The district lawyer then sent me a redacted version of the email communications between Sean and the board regarding my open records request. This email was missing ongoing conversations between at least two board members, and he redacted the personal opinions or belief of, beliefs of board member Joe Vierkant. In summary, Mr. Dierfler, Dierfler delayed and redacted my legally requested material. More importantly, his redaction changed the scope, framing, and content of my inquiry. This is a clear violation of five twenty-two point three regarding staff misconduct. I, as a citizen, should have access to public records in accordance with the state and federal laws. In addition, I would like to remind the board of Policy five twenty-two point four, Staff Conduct and Code of Ethics. Positive atmosphere and practical ethical expectations. According to Amory School Board District Policy two fifty-one, I have and am continuing to follow the chain of command in informing you of this misconduct. More specifically, we have overreaching policies that outline the expectations for Mr. Dierfler's behavior at school, at the Amory School District. That is Policy two twenty-four point one. Mr. Dierfler must comply with the Code of Ethics under the American Association of School Administrators, AASA Superintendent Association. It is my understanding that Mr. Dierfler violated multiple points of the AASA twelve codes of ethics that our district requires him to adhere to. AASA Policy two, he is to fulfill and per, all professional duties with honesty and integrity and always act in a trustworthy and responsible manner. Policy three, he is required to support the principle of due process and protect the civil and human rights of all individuals. Policy four, he is to implement local, state, and national lar, laws regarding open records requests. Policy five, he is to advise the school board and implement the board's policies at administrative rules and regulations. Policy seven, avoids using his position of personal gain through political, social, religious, economic, or other influences. By not fulfilling my open records request, it isn't, in its entirety, he created a new document and delivered a new message to the community with a different scope and message.
How much more have you got?
Not much.
Okay, thank you.
Providing advice and guidance without full scope under his jurisdiction. A private discussion at a quorum level without calling a formal board meeting further violates my civil rights. He used his position to influence a political and economic situation in violation of AASA's Code of Ethics in more ways than one. The board is responsible for his course of discipline, and as a citizen, he has violated my civil rights. I will also at this time remain, remind the board of the AASA's Code of Ethics Policy eleven. Accepts responsibility and accountability for one's own actions and behaviors. I'm requesting the district to hold Mr. Dierfler responsible for violating the school district policy, breaking the law, and depriving me of my civil rights. This is not taken lightly. We must hold our elected officials and our community leaders to the very highest ethical standards. This solitary interaction shows our superintendent violating three Amory School District policies and five out of the eleven code of conduct standards. This illustrates a pervasive ethical problem that has been allowed to fester in our community. As Mr. Dierfler's employee, this board is also culpable for facilitating this egregious behavior. He should be sanctioned appropriately for breaking not one, not two, not three, but multiple violations of our district's codes and board policies. This is yet another formal notification of my complaint. I would like the district to formally notify me of the next actions that they intend to take in this matter.
I have a copy for you.
I don't need one. We're good.
All right.
I do have a question. Sean, did you say those things?
What?
Did you say those things that she said at the beginning?
No, I did not.
Um, did you redact her email, the emails?
I, I did not redact any emails. The attorney of the School District of Amory did.
So those were, that was not true?
I have not redacted any emails. That is our attorney's work. And I have a statement from our attorney that I can read here stating he's a hundred percent responsible for all redactions made.
Could I read the email, since we're talking here?
The, the email is attorney-client privilege. I couldn't read an attorney email in an open session of a board meeting. That would be improper.
So, for example, Sean, if I?
This is not a conversation that should occur here.
Well.
Is that because you guys don't want it to happen?
No, because it's, it's not right. It's illegal.
I think, no, no, I, no, like, hold on.
What you inferred, what you inferred was that he did something.
All right, have a little, have a little respect here.
I think I need, we need to make a motion to go into closed session.
You don't want to hear my email, though. I want to make sure you don't want to hear my email. I think the community needs to know the email and how you're redacting.
I didn't redact anything. The attorney did.
Okay, so the attorney is the one who redacted it, but the school district released it.
The attorney redacted it?
She explained it beautifully. I, I can't wait to actually see.
Are you just, are you referencing the redacted email that you would like to read?
Simply, yes, very short.
I would caution you not to, based on the attorney's guidance. I would caution you not to do that.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it.
Because that's from our attorney. It's not a, it's not an open letter.
It's, no, I'm talking about the one from, that I narrated and wrote.
On school technology, how like school.
Um, it's, so again, yes. I narrated, school board member Joe Vierkant narrated a report, an email. And I narrated an email which is open records to the community, and they should know it. And you redacted it, completely changing the context.
I didn't redact it.
Why you redacted it?
The email that I got the first one that was redacted?
Stop, stop, right now.
This is a closed session conversation.
This is completely inappropriate by your actions.
This is a closed session conversation.
Motion adjourned.
Motion is made to adjourn?
Close session.
I'll second that.
Which one?
That we go into closed session.
All right, do you redact, retract your motion? Okay, the motion is made to go into closed session. Joe, second by Char. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in close.